All right, good evening, everybody. The Joint Planning Development Subcommittee Town Council meeting Wednesday, April 17th, 2024, here in the Veterans Conference Room. It's at 6:30, it's 6:30. Number one call to order, two, roll call. Councilor Daniel is excused, he's on vacation, but he'll be here next week. This is a member, Barsha?
Here.
This is a member, Erdome?
Here.
Councilor Adams is present. Yeah, cool. Three, considering accept the minutes of April 3rd, 2024?
Solved, I'll second.
Okay, questions, discussion? There is none, all those are paper? Pose, three, zero? That's okay. All right, number four. Review discuss the approval to apply for the One Stop for Growth Expression of Interest of $2 million to complete roadway improvements for Southbridge Innovation Center and entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council. This has changed, so the Planning Board, PND Subcommittee understands it was sent back from the Town Council, motion to postpone, sent back to the Planning Development for further discussion, more insight of what's going on and stuff like that. That was at the last Town Council meeting, so here we are today, April 17th. Also, there may have been a few changes, obviously, from possible Mass Works grant to, was it the housing grant? You can see, it's on your agenda, actually, it's in your paperwork. Anyways, wanted to kick this off, and I'll start with you, Peg.
If you could just, if, when you make a motion, if you could make a friendly amendment for it to say for up to $5 million? The Housing Works grant has, for up to five, $5 million, excuse me, has for up to $5 million? And we'll leave it broad, as Chip and I have discussed that way, if, whatever the feedback is from the state, as long as we're not preventing ourselves from applying for one or the other. What we'll do is, under the application, there, you were supposed to fill in which grants you're applying for, you're looking for feedback on, we'll submit it under the housing choice, assuming Chip's team agrees with it, and, or the Housing Works. And then, what they'll do is, they'll come back with their input, whatever their results of their input are, will then lead to a further request from Town Council for permission to apply for the actual grant before June. And so, Chip was nice enough to come tonight to provide PowerPoint for everybody. He's also on the docket downstairs, so thank you for letting him present now, and then he'll hopefully make it down the line for that.
You don't want back of my head?
He always looks at me, too, always. So, I mean, this, the bird, not bear.
I can tell by the color of his ears.
Actually, I was outside today, all day. I just want to note that Councilor Rivas is here, and I actually forgot to hold her name out, but just make mention that Jasmine is here.
Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Chip Norton, for those who don't know me. I own the Southbridge Innovation Center, which is the former American Optical complex. I started originally building the Hotel Conference Center as a consultant, partnered with AO, and then I bought the overall property in 2006. And, complex is made up of 1.2 million square feet, 14 buildings, including the Hotel Conference Center. We're about half done at this point, and we've got 600,000 square feet left to go, which is really consolidated into three major buildings, 25K Street, 40-50 Optical Drive, and 35 Optical Drive. And they're all about 200, just in around 200,000 square feet. 25K Street is slated for its conversion to 127 affordable units. It's basically Phase Two of our Southbridge Mills project. Phase One was 5K Street, 48 units, which was delivered February a year ago. We're currently in the state queue to get approved for federal and state funding, which is what you need to move these projects forward. Our hope is that we'll be approved this summer, if not, there's a second round at the end of the year, we most likely would then get approved. So that's a project that would go into construction in '25, and then 40 and 50 Optical. We're actually working with the Planning Board, we have a hearing tonight to finalize residential permits for that, those two buildings of 139 units. And then our plan with 35 Optical, which would be the last building, is a conversion to manufacturer warehouse distribution. The enhancements in the project that we've built in are twofold. One, you may know, we just recently got listed on the National Register, they were all property, based on American Optical's industrial heritage, not so much the architectural significance of the buildings, which I think is actually very, really a neat story about the town and how American Optical, really the town, built up around it, and what an institution it was, not only locally, but also nationally, as a major industrial company. So we have a designation, and what that allows us to now do is access tax credits, which we can use to reduce and offset the cost of development, which allows us to be more competitive in Massachusetts, which is really the issue for Southbridge, is building quality product at a competitive price. So, the tax credits allow us to do that, and they're primarily utilized for residential development. And then, in 2017, '18, I converted the power plant to a co-gen plant, which I did primarily to be in position to attract manufacturing to the park, to be able to provide all utilities at below-market rates to a large enough user. So that's the strategy and plan for the development. And how this fits in tonight is, we're working with the town to put together a multimillion-dollar infrastructure improvement project that would not only just be used to upgrade roads and sidewalks within the park, but actually build in public amenities and convert the private property to a public access, public use facility, approximately 70 acres. You may not know, in the mid-'90s, we donated the land across the street from the complex to the town to have their, build their town common and build their police station. This is a little different structure, because we're not donating the land, so to speak, technically by title, but we really are, we're converting a private property to a public use facility. So that's kind of the, the plan that I want to talk through tonight, how that works and what the costs are, and then what the implications are to the town. Just to finish on the complex, I've invested about $150 million to date into the property. Needless to say, we're the largest property owner and largest taxpayer by a long shot in, in Southbridge. And estimated for the remaining three buildings projects, probably another $150 million of a private investment. So the concept behind the master plan for the park is to take approximately 70 acres, the total park is 150 acres, 50 of which we call Parcel Three, which was the old American Optical landfill, which has subsequently been capped and environmentally cleaned, but there's really not much we can do there. You'll see on the plan, that's where bike trails and other areas, walking trails would go up in the backwoods on Parcel Three. The majority of the work and improvements are on Parcel Two. And as I said earlier, it's a combination of creation of walking and biking trails, public water access to the Quinnebach River, roadway and bridge upgrades, and then new public amenities, and just basically a greater pedestrian connection through it throughout the park. Some of the improvements that we will end up doing are being required as part of the development, residential development of 25K's and 40 and 50 Optical. New sidewalks, sidewalks where there aren't sidewalks, the idea to have a safe walking environment within the park and not interact pedestrians, the public, with traffic and truck activity. To get more specific on the breakdown, Phase One scope of the work, Mechanic Street Optical Drive, that's basically the front entrance to the, to the complex by the hotel, new sidewalks, lighting, and reorganizing basically that intersection, so it's an easier in-and-out from the park and a safer traffic environment than currently it is. Introduce sidewalks, which I'll talk about further in areas where there aren't sidewalks today, and then some just general roadway improvements. You know, the complex was built in 1888, we've done a lot of road upgrades and improvements, but it needs a, it needs a further upgrades, maybe more from a safety and access standpoint. The next sheet is, it's just a little detail, but really, it's just a, it's a rework of the Mechanic Street entrance, this is just kind of a detailed drawing of showing sidewalks and crosswalks, so people could access into the, into the property from across the street. And then widening up the entrance and, and putting a buffer zone between our property and the Chinese restaurant, because right now, it's kind of confusing, as you come in, where the entrance is and where it ends and stops, so a better definition of that, that whole entrance area, and then moving in towards the hotel complex. The next sheet is the pedestrian connection, I think this is a real big part of the concept behind the project. So the red line is basically, shows a, almost an oval walk, starting at the, on the left-hand side of the sheet is the Hotel Conference Center, and walking down Mechanic Street, past the common, continuing on all the way down to 5K Street. There is all sidewalk there now, that would be improved and, and well-lit. And then, rather than continue into the park there, you take a left-hand turn, and there's a walkway and there's footbridge that would take you across, right in front of the pond. And, a neat aspect about this is there, you may or may not know, there's a covered pedestrian bridge over the dam now, over the river. It's not open to the public, we use it, though, that would be opened up, so there'd be a walkway and a visual opportunity of the Quinnebach River and the dam as you walk over it, and then continuing on down along the river with 50 Optical to your right, and then up around, and then, there is no walkway from the small building, 40 Optical, right there, all the way back down to the bridge. So that'd be, new sidewalk would be added there, once again, to make sure pedestrians could walk without any interaction with the traffic. And then there is a sidewalk now that would be improved from the, from the main bridge, heading back to the main entrance. The next sheet kind of outlines the walking and biking trails, as I said, they spread up into the woods, onto Parcel Three, and around. There would be parking areas set up for that area, so people could drive in with their bikes, or just drive in, park, and, and walk. We would have two or three emergency stations. By the way, the park would be open dawn to dusk, it would not be open after, at dark. And, for instance, there'd be, the bridge would be blocked off, the connection from the sidewalk on Mechanic Street would be blocked off. So, we would set up some safety protocols in place, so after hours, there wouldn't be a lot of activity within the park. There'd be safety phones, emergency info would set up in two or three different areas throughout the park, and they would be well-lit, so that any sort of emergency took place, that people could, would have phone access to the police and EMT. The next sheet is some of the public amenities we're looking at. First would be a set of stairs that would take you down to the river, this would be kind of past the hotel, across the street from the town common. We're researching boating and what kind of boating activities can go on. I'm not sure if that will be, we'll be able to pull that up because of the dam and the safety factors, so that's something we're looking into right now. But at least we would have a setup where there'd be access down to the riverfront, from the side of the river. And then, two platform areas, one adjacent to the hotel, and then one across the way in front of 50 Optical, where folks could walk on and basically step out into the river area and get a better view and perspective of things. The current budget is $6.5 million. We are still in the process of working through drawings, once we get drawings completed to a higher level, we'll be able to get better costing put together. As part of this submission program with the town, you have to have the drawings at 70% complete, because you have to show the state and federal agencies that you have a shovel-ready project. So, the drawings are in place, are in process, and those will be completed as part of the application process in man. So we've done a preliminary breakdown of, of the costs and, and the funding sources, and once again, these are estimates, and then the funding sources, as Peg said earlier, are placeholders. The way this is, would work is, we would complete the application with the towns, with the town, the town would submit the application, and then we'd get feedback from the various state and federal agencies as to what pocket of money we would fit best into. And so, you kind of have to let that process take its, we have a pretty good idea where the funding would come from, but it's going to be a function of, you know, what other projects are in with that agency, what the, what the asks are and that sort of thing, and the surplus of money. So, our two primary sources are Mass Works, which Peg's familiar with and I'm familiar with, I've done two or three Mass Works projects in Worcester, that's a great program, basically it, it's there for public infrastructure to support economic development. And the other pot of money, which is actually something new, we just, Peg just stumbled on, is this House Works Infrastructure Program, which sounds like it's, it's well-suited for a portion of the project, because it's identified or geared towards residential development. So, that would be a good fit for improvements that are in and around the residential parts of the project. Optical Drive roadway improvements, those are basically the improvements coming in, the main entry up to the bridge. We're looking at EDA, that's a federal program for those funds. There will be a private investment component, I will be putting a portion of money in, to be determined, based on the feedback from how much money we raise and, and what the agencies are looking for, for contribution. By the way, I'm not looking for the town to put any money into this, other than just to be these, basically taking the lead on accessing the, the public funds. Internal improvements, trails, walkways, the bike trails, lighting, wayfinding, 2.7 million. Once again, that would be a combination conceivably of Mass Works and Housing Works and private capital. And lastly, landscaping, there's another, there's a legislation pending for funding of affordable housing project infrastructure, once again, that would fit perfectly for what we're doing, but that is not approved yet, it's waiting on legislative approval. That would be, if that does get approved this summer, that would be another great source and good fit for this project, because it's, it's residentially geared and towards affordable housing projects. So the way this works is, the town and I would enter into an agreement in perpetuity that basically would provide a public access easement for the 70-plus acres that would get redeveloped. The town would, would not take title, the town would not take any sort of financial obligation on, they have no obligation to maintain, it would all stay with the developer owner, which is the way it's been since I've owned the property, I mean, we, all of the costs to maintain the property are privately funded by me, and the town makes no contribution. Town, of course, gets the taxes from the property, which are, we're running about $1 million a year, coming from the property in, in tax payments. And that's basically the, the concept. As I said, the private developer would stay fully responsible for maintaining the roads, as I always have, going forward, town would have no financial obligation or liability as it related to both the improvements and maintaining post-improvements. The timing is, some of these programs are staggered around the calendar year. Mass Works is a specific June submission, so, somebody brought up the question about time, we want to be in position to get this approved on the town side this month, so we can complete the application with the town and submit within the appropriate timeframe for Mass Works. We don't have a sense of when the housing funds, the state housing funds, when they get approved, when that funding would be, it would probably be in the fall, I would guess, if it does get approved this summer, so, it might even be next year, so, who knows?
Anything else, Mr. Norton?
Nope, no questions.
Well, Berro, good questions, then.
I have a question, with Building 35, you said that that might be a manufacturing? How many jobs would, would that be?
That's a hard question to answer, in this, in this world, you know, the technology's taking over manufacturing, it really depends on the industry. It could be anywhere from 100 to 200 jobs, I'd say that's probably a safe, safe range.
So then, with the housing, the jobs and everything, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out, and you have that one entrance by Mechanic Street, is there any way where ideal pool is, where that street light is, the, you know, the street light, ideal pool? Is there any way you could, huh? Right, right, over there, is there any way to build a bridge and a road, as another access to the property? So that it would be easier for, for ambulance, or fire trucks, or even massive trailer trucks to come in to?
Yeah, so, as part of the 40-50 approval process, we've had traffic, we're required to do traffic studies, not only adding 40 and 50 on, within the complex, but completing the remaining building. And, you have to remember that, at one time, we're 6,000 people working here. Our employment maximum numbers, employment side would be about 500, then we have a couple, depending on the housing, another 2, 3, 400, so way below what this property ever generated. So they've done traffic studies, the impact to the road system would be nominal coming out of this complex. The only recommendation that's been made is we look at Mechanic Street and make the improvements that we're talking about now from a visibility and access standpoint. Other than that, K Street is not a main access point for the park, it never will be. That's going to be pretty much just residential, those two buildings down there, we'll use the K Street entrance, where everybody else will use Mechanic Street, for the most part, which is the way it's working, pretty much now.
But how does a fire truck get down there? Do they have to go all around?
It can get in both ways. Not only can get in both ways, the shot property, which is next door, we have an easement agreement with them, where fire, fire probably coming through their entrance also, so there's actually three access points into the park.
You good, okay, anybody else? Councilor Reeves?
Is that a question about, we had talked earlier about the playground, and I don't, like, playground and a pocket park in the, in a previous?
Yeah, so, the current plans are a playground, the plan was incorrect, so I removed it, because it showed the playground at 5K Street, which did not happen. So the playground's now going to go right here, in this island area, and that will serve 25 and 5K Street. And then, as part of the 40-50 approval project, approvals, we're also required to build the playground right there, also.
So, would those also be part of the agreement and open to the public?
We can look at that, sure, yep, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, first question, I guess, would be, how many housing units are we talking altogether total? How many people would be, how many apartments would be available, total, when you're finished and complete?
Approximately 300.
300?
Uh-huh.
And parking availability?
It's all been laid out, as part of the approvals of those projects, we've had to come up with a parking plan and convince the Planning Board that we have adequate parking, and we do. The ratio is about 1.5 per unit, is kind of a safe ratio.
I think, yeah.
I know, we're running under that at, at 5K Street, running about 1, but the industry norm is 1.5.
Because I see a lot of apartments now in town where you have a single family, but you've got four cars?
Yeah, we're-
In that single family.
Most of our units are two beds, we have very few three beds, we're a combination of two and one beds. It's called workforce housing, it's really made for a couple, might have one child, you know, working couple, that sort of thing.
Now, you said you gave property, or you helped to build the police station, the property that's there?
What's the, the town common today was American Optical land, in 1996, we donated the land to the town, for a dollar, and the town used it to build its common and build the police station.
I thought with the police station was, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, with the not apartments there, there was a road that went that way across?
Oh, maybe a long time ago, but it was, it was vacant land, we donated to the town in 1996, I couldn't tell you what was there before that.
Okay. And as far as, all the people working at American Optical at one time, and all the vehicles, a lot of people walked, I worked there, a lot of people walked.
Yeah.
A lot of people, people came and picked them up at the end of the day, because there's only one vehicle per household, the husband got out of work, whatever, went there and picked them up. You didn't have 500 vehicles there at one time. There was a lot of traffic, there was police officers at Lenzdale, at the Rotary, there were a number of places where there were police directing traffic, for all the traffic coming in and out. So I, you're going to probably have more traffic with people living there versus people that were working there.
Well, you can talk to the Planning Board, we've done the traffic studies that have showed the impact to the, the public roads and your walking, you can read it, I mean, the impacts are minimal.
The traffic study you did was during COVID, correct?
No, just now, we just did it.
Just now you did one? Okay, I was just curious, I remember there was one during COVID.
No. The one we're, we just did in the last 60, 90 days for 40-50 Optical, was an analysis of adding those units into the mix, and then also completing the rest of the project, and the impacts on the road system.
Thank you, Councilor.
Maybe this question would need to Peggy, did we have an agreement with the, the owners of AO, that the town would assist them in applying for grants? Did I read that somewhere?
No.
In the documentation that went to the courts, I mean, it was filed on the deeds, or, did I read that somewhere in the paperwork that I was given in the last couple months?
No, I provided you a memo that said that, you know, there was an easement agreement that was presented to the prior Town Council and leadership that maybe knew to some of the new councilors?
Maybe I saw it like that.
And that, and that, it's a covenant that we enter into with Chip, that talks about how, I think I provided you the actual covenant, so you can read through it, but it talks about how the property will be brought up to municipal standards, and it will have public access in perpetuity, it will, you know, it talks about security, police detail, it has a lot of information in there about how the mechanics of it will work, and it was approved by that, again, that Town Council at the time. I have one recommendation to change a little part of the language in it, which Chip and his team have said wouldn't be a problem at all. And, with that, then that allows us to go for public funds for quote-unquote "public roads." So that's what he needs. So when, when Chip presented the master plan to the town back 2019?
Yeah, four, five years ago.
I, I, the guise, I think, was always that with that covenant, these roads would become these public roads, he would therefore be able to access public money. So, I think maybe just what wasn't stated very forthright, you know, or directly, was with public funds, Chip will be able to complete the master plan. And so, you know, that's why you haven't necessarily seen the, the private investment yet, and, and there will be private investment, because he's paying for the design and whatever other funds he raises towards the project.
Yeah, I mean, at that point, infrastructure, probably about $2 million into the site infrastructure in the last five, seven years, so, I have been putting private money into the, you know, what will be public access roads.
Right, but what the town is seeing is one master plan that's not, not delivered, right? And so I think that there's the disconnect, it's like, he's just been waiting, yes, now that, if I understand correctly, you know, he's just been waiting for us to be able to go ahead with this.
So, the thing that I think people don't know when it comes up to this point in time is the amount of work that the Planning Board put into this. And I know there's been discussion within council about the sewer, the water, the drainage, the roadway system. All that's been addressed in the Planning Board conditions, I believe, that the DPW has to sign off, that the Sewer Department has to sign off, the Fire Department. So all that is written into the plan of order of conditions, I guess is what you would call it.
Order of conditions would be Conservation Commission, yes, the special conditions, or the conditions for 40 and 50 Optical through the Planning Board.
Right, so that took, as far as I'm concerned, for me, is the concern of the water, the sewer, the drainage, because our, our people are going to sign off whether it's acceptable, or it needs to be upgraded, or something needs to be done, and I think, they'll have to say to the Planning Board. The other thing that people don't seem to understand was like- The other thing that people don't seem to understand was like, number twenty-five, well, let's start with five K Street. The playground that was originally put into the system was allowed to not go in by the town. That was done by the town planner. And the reason for that was a safety concern because of the main, the huge gas line that went through the property where the playground was anticipated to go. So the town planner, uh, did this without knowledge to anybody else in the town. So it's not, no fault of the developer. I think we found that all out during this process here with fifty optical drive, and he plans on putting a playground in at, actually twenty-five in both locations. The other thing I think is a misconception to people is the fact that the planning board puts in order of conditions, those order of conditions do not take place until a building permit has actually been issued. Am I correct?
Correct. So for, for twenty-five case, the conditions are, he's not obligated to meet those conditions until he's ready to hold a building permit.
Correct. So that's part of the reason why, if, if we look at it, that some of the stuff has stayed done. And once the permit is issued, then we'll see action on the planning board's conditions.
That's right.
The other thing that I've heard in the last couple of weeks is that this application that Mr. Don's going for was for engineering. And I'm, I don't know where that came about. This is an application of interest for up to five and a half million dollars, you said, now?
I'm suggesting we apply for up to five million, because that's a maximum.
And in that money, there's a, a plan on usage of what that money's going for. So this letter that we're asking for has nothing to do with engineering and those kind of things. Am I correct?
Correct. This would be for construction.
So can we stress that point on a presentation that goes Monday night? That this is not for engineering, because the con- some of the concern out there is we're paying for engineering for something that may not happen. It's not engineering, at least.
Yeah, five, I may have dealt with it initially.
Am I correct that you've heard that kind of thing maybe yourself?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address it when you're, when everybody's done. Yeah, absolutely, Counsel. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks. My questions were all answered and-
Yeah.
Uh, again, I understand by going more to the planning board, what that process, the conditions are done by the planning board and when they do take effect. And the fact that it's the zoning board, the zoning board and the zoning enforcement office that has the pu- the authority and the charge to make sure that he's doing what he says he's going to do.
Good to go. Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Marketti?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, Chip, could you tell me how many units are at five K Street?
Forty-eight.
And how many people apply?
Five hundred.
Five hundred people apply at forty-eight. So there must be a need for affordable housing.
There is a need for affordable housing as part of the state, absolutely.
Now, the last time you, you wanted to do this a couple of years ago, we, I was on the council. We were working along. We were gonna get the Mass Works grant. Could you explain why that didn't happen?
Sure. Um, the, uh, at the time, uh, we were looking at thirty-five optical, optical to convert to cannabis, uh, manufacturing. The ban on recreational marijuana had been lifted in Southbridge. So we took that opportunity to see if we could convert that building for manufacturing. And while we were building the marketing plant and starting down that road, um, in the application with Mass Works, you had, NEDA, you have to list the proposed uses for the remaining buildings. And when we asked the question about, uh, cannabis cultivation, they both, agencies said, both said that you're, you're dead in the water. Uh, it's not allowed federally, so we can't put any money into it. Mass said the same thing. It's allowed in Mass, but said we just from a, um, perception standpoint, we cannot be investing money in the cannabis industry. So we went to the town and said, we really got a, you know, we got a chicken and egg here. We wanna develop this building. You want us to develop this building. We also wanna do the master plan. So why don't we put this on hold and let's go to market the building for cannabis and see what happens? And we did for a year or two, and the market had pretty much come, come, had come and gone at that point by the, we got into the market. So that's why we stopped the process and now we're starting it back up again. 'Cause it's obvious that cannabis manufacturing is not gonna be a fit for that, our property.
All right. Thank you. Now, if you wanted to jump in, that's fine.
Just in the interim, then, the following year or two years later, we did go for the Mass Works grant for, uh, five K Street to complement that development with the East Main Street, um, uh, upgrades, which have not happened yet. We plan to go to bid this spring.
Okay, now, so you want to bring manufacturing into the old Arrow Plant, I believe, is that?
The old Arrow Plant, yeah.
And how are you going to do that? You're going to personally, you're going to talk to businesses to try and bring it?
Yeah, we're gonna take, I mean, we've, we've been marketing the building for fifteen-plus years with not much luck. Um, Arrow left, Arrow got acquired by Three M and left in two thousand eleven. We've had some short-term tenants in there periodically, but, um, so what I'm gonna do is take a more proactive marketing plan for the next year or two and go directly to manufacturers that have, uh, large energy needs. Uh, once again, using our Cogen plant as kind of our amenity and, and deliver utilities at below-market rates and see if that stimulates some interest in the park.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Go ahead. Keep going, Counselor.
Okay. So it's been a concern of some counselors that you're not going to do this. If you're, you know, you're telling us you're going to do this project, we give you the Mass Works grant, and then you don't do it. If you don't do what you say you're gonna do here, how would that work? I don't, I, I would think that Mass Works would be a little angry with you if you didn't do what you said you're gonna do here. Am I wrong, or?
Yeah, they'd be angry with me. They'd be angry with the town.
So you're going to, we're gonna put in for this Mass Works grant, what you say you're going to do here is what's going to be done, right? Correct?
Yeah. I mean, I, first of all, um, there's improvements that need to get done. Uh, secondly, some of these requirements are, are part of building out the rest of the park, twenty-five K Street and forty and fifty optical drive. Those projects can't be approved without the work done. Um, and finally, I'm, I'm incentivized to do it because it's gonna enhance the park. It gives you the best opportunity to finish the last few buildings.
So the, and then the other just one more thing. The only reason why you might not be able to do everything that you want to do here, is that because you don't know how much you're going to get from the Mass Works grant, or?
Uh, no, that's a good question. So this all could end up being, the cost could go up. Uh, this is an environment where construction costs are escalating, continue to escalate all the time. Uh, but secondly, there may be some amenities that we stumble on that we wanna add some more. Uh, so this could end up being, and we're not quite sure how much money you're gonna get in the first go-around. So this could be a multi-phase project, no question. Most likely will be.
If I may through you, Chair.
Hey, man.
This has to have local control. For us, if the, if the money's awarded, it's awarded to the town. Um, and so what would happen is we would actually have to take their design and go to bid and execute the project on their behalf.
Okay.
There you go.
So, in my opinion, this is a pretty good plan he's got here. And I, I, I can't see how it hurts the town whatsoever to go with this. Give him a shot. Bringing manufacturing to town is music to my ears. I want manufacturing to come to this town. The amenities that you wanna allow for all residents to use, I don't see how this is a bad plan. So I'm willing to support it. Give the guy a chance. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Steve.
If I may through you, Chair. And just keeping it realistic, as much as even with a supercharged marketing effort over the next one to two years, you know, we've seen businesses who were very close to considering other properties in town that have come and gone. And so, you know, just, I, I don't wanna falsely get everybody's hopes up that that's a, a shoe-in. There's a chance that he may not be able to fill that building with manufacturing.
I can't manufacture the market. The market speaks for itself, so.
Didn't, didn't you?
It's a tough one.
Yep.
I'm done.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Anything else?
Didn't you at one time have somebody interested in coming in here and bringing in a workforce of two hundred people and mass hires said you, it couldn't supply the workforce? Did that happen?
Um, we had a laundry company out of Worcester. That was years ago for that building. And they needed two hundred and, uh, couldn't, we could not convince them the workforce was here to do it. They were in Worcester. That was their biggest concern, was their adequate workforce. Um, we've been in touch with, um, Workforce Central, which is a tenant of ours in the park. And they've assured us that they can find, locate the workforce within a twenty-five mile radius of up to two hundred. Now, the question is, what's the skill level gonna be? What's the industry? So you just don't know. But they believe there's enough, um, enough, a large enough workforce to support manufacturing for that building.
You all set?
Yeah.
Good to go.
So I like the idea of manufacturing and creating jobs, all about hard work. And I don't approve, I don't like the thought of affordable housing. Is there a way maybe to twist one of the buildings into housing for people employed at manufacturing? I worked, I lived in Manhattan. The major hospitals own buildings and doctors and nurses and other staff were housed.
Absolutely. That's one of the benefits of housing being here is potentially, if we can find a manufacturer, the housing's here. So it's a great-
Just have an incentive, you know, bring people in and-
Exactly.
You know, have you looked into medical, um, processing like IV fluids or manufacturing gloves and, and other PPE-like masks and stuff like that? Have you ever looked into those type of companies?
We haven't done a targeted marketing plan. I mean, we've, we've been marketing Central Mass for a number of years, uh, with the largest brokerage company. Um, we haven't gone specifically, as I said, to an industry. That's what we're gonna do now. I think our, our leverage point is we gotta distinguish ourselves from everybody else. And it's gonna be the energy is gonna be it. Um, we don't bring anything to the table to a company that manufactures gloves. They can do that anywhere. That's not a cost, there's no cost competitiveness. We can be there. Um, remember, you have to be close to your distribution markets, uh, too, and that's part of the problem. We're not. Amazon aside and what they're building three miles away, that's a whole different model than what most tenants we would be talking to. They're talking about a more localized distribution.
Well, just for instance, I used to mix and administer chemo in a doctor's office. So it was years ago when Hurricane Maria, I believe, affected Puerto Rico.
Mm-hmm.
And there's two major plants that, I believe it's Bedron and Hospira that manufacture, there are IV fluids there. And there was, there was a, uh, there was, no, it wasn't so much a shortage. There was a, uh, what's the word? The clean rooms were contaminated, so they were shut down.
Mm-hmm.
That paralyzed all of the US. So we had to get IV fluids in from Spain and, and England and Canada, and they were price gouging like you can't believe. It was just insane, the amount of money. And I was like, why do they have all their plants there? Why isn't there anyone here in the, in the United States where, you know, hurricanes are rare here? And if there are, we're not gonna get the damage.
Sure.
Hey, you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Counselor Reeves?
Just a correction. Puerto Rico is part of the US.
No, I understand. I, I know it is. I know it is. But I'm like for three major manufacturers of IV fluids to have all their plants down there where hurricanes.
Anything else?
Um, I just had a quick, um, comment about affordable housing. I think it, I think it's, it would be helpful in thinking about just our school system and trying to attract teachers. I think having affordable housing where young teachers, um, might be looking to move into our community. I think that would be an asset. Um, you know, just thinking about how we attract and, and recruit teachers, especially someone who's just graduating from a program. That would be a very attractive, um, thing to have in our community.
This, this, we'll finish, I, and I know Mr. Norton's gotta get there. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Counselor, I'm sorry.
Again, there's a difference between affordable housing and low-income housing. And affordable housing is the moderate-type income that falls a certain federal guidelines of what can be rented. But I think that's the problem that people have out there, that affordable housing and low-income housing, they're two different beasts in itself. Even though like this affordable housing may allow some low-income housing in there, but low-income and, and, uh, affordable housing are two different types of, uh, housing, uh, payments.
Appreciate it. Is there anything else? Just one of the last few comments real quick. Affordable housing, we really have no control as a town at this point in time or as a state. There's a lot of requirements at this point in time for towns to bring in affordable housing. There's a big push by the governor herself to get affordable housing in there. And even we say affordable housing, still people can't do it. But I, I wanna go back to, to, to actually the agenda item itself. There's the, Counselor, uh, Shanier, I've never heard about the engineering or the anything, ever. Not one time was there a conversation about that, or at least to me, and we've been part of this for quite some time. Um, I, I'm glad Mr. Norton brought up the Amazon plant, 'cause he, he has been working with Amazon. I know the town has, or we've been trying to work with Amazon. I know the town has been trying to work with Amazon to bring the individuals over here as they train, build up over there to, to take the classes here, house the employees here within the DOD, or the old DOD facility, the hotel. Um, I left this agenda wide open for everybody to question, because there's a lot of miss- the conversations that I've been having completely off the top, o- off the topic, e- absolutely, uh, wrong. The parks, the playgrounds, and stuff like that, it's always been part of the plan. Understanding the master plan is one thing. The reality is another thing. But the, the fact is, the po- the playground and the parks have always been part of this plan. Um, so I know one counselor asked about the parks and the playground. So that's always been part of it. And I've specifically asked every single counselor to reach out, except for one, I would say, to reach out to, to Mr. Norton, just to get the, um, some of the questions answered. This is, to me, a no-brainer. Six and a half million dollar investment into our town at no cost, that's, I understand. I read the entire thing about, we got the Mass Works grant, but then the housing grant. You know, I know we can go up to ten percent in kind. I know, went through the application process, ten percent gives them more points and stuff like that. I'm not sure if there's a political flavor to do ten percent of six and a half million or two million or five million dollars. So, but that is a requirement. You answered the question about the public property with the covenant and all that kinda stuff, because I know it was for public property. I'm glad to see that, uh, Mr. Norton is willing to, to tweak that just a little bit, uh, on the covenant, 'cause it's been something that, in two thousand nineteen, it was introduced. You had concerns about it. And I know we've worked closely with his team to fix all those things that you had concerns with. I'm not sure if one hundred percent of what you wanted got done, but you, I know you, it actually was in our paperwork, too, was the covenant itself.
Just, just to clarify. So I personally didn't, I haven't had any revisions with-
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
Which may have been Rosemary prior to me. I have, I came in and looked at it when you were initially proposing it again and said, if we were to go forward, this is what I would recommend. Is this, is this one of them? So other, you know, otherwise, in, um, uh, in the bulk of it, um, I had no issue. Again, it's just that one highlighted line.
So my, yeah, okay. So my apologies on that one. Um, actually, I thought it was this one that you talked to Chip on.
Uh, yes. And I don't know which attorney, for instance, I don't even know which attorney redlined it. So I don't know.
Oh, that's been a while ago.
Yeah, exactly. So a while before my time.
Um, I, I'm gonna tell you, I'm a big fan of everything that's happening over there. I just don't understand it. I drove through the AO as I was coming here today. You had ten to fifteen people just walking the streets over there, around there, um, that like they was doing in springtime and the summer, and there's more stuff. And plus you house the buses, buses that are over there as well for the, the school system. I mean, so six and a half million dollar investment into our town again, po- possibly bringing some more jobs to the, to the area. Mass Hire that's over there, providing those individuals. I mean, I, I remember five through fifteen K Street, we gave three hundred fifty thousand dollars in wave permit fees, right? To get the project. I believe that's what we, that was an agreement. The second one, twenty-five through thirty-five, was, we were already doing work and we, we sent the letter off of support for you as well. Now you're doing the other projects, and I, I completely understand. I think the only thing that I have my concerns are is the services that will probably need to be increased because of the individuals that are coming into town or the amount of people that are coming into town. Um, that's always been my concern with any type of affordable housing, because I don't think the state realizes that we need to have more services provided. I think you've answered every single question that all the councils that I've heard talk, those that are here today and not here today, have asked. So with me, I have no problem moving forward with this. Um, my question to you is, 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 is this the, the grant you're seeking? That, that you wanna go forward?
Specifically Mass Works?
Well, now that, we got the memorandum of change. Well, obviously, I read off the agenda item. Um, it's for the housing grant, the housing grant, uh, instead of the Mass Works. It's for the housing grant, the housing grant, uh, instead of the Mass Works grant, is that?
Well, I said to Peg, I mean, I think she said at the beginning, we're, we're, we're all, we're not quite sure which pot of money this is gonna fit into, it's gonna be the state agencies kind of directing us. On the surface, we've done Mass Works before, the town's done Mass Works, I've done Mass Works. I've never done this mass housing or the, the Housing Works Fund, I don't, all I know is what I've read about it. It sounds like it's a good fit. So from my perspective, I prefer the language to be broader, um, as to the, the pots of money that the town's gonna access, based on really the feedback and guidance we get from the state and federal agencies.
So that brings up the next question. Again, we're only allowing Miss Dean to apply to one source or send it to one source for further discussion, further guidance, further, further consideration. And then the application for that grant takes place before the end of June, am I correct on that?
At the beginning, sure.
What I heard the other day was, we're pretty much shooting down something we don't even know. We're not recommending anything that we don't even know yet. Here we know what, what it's going for, and the experts are supposed to tell us what, if any recommendations there will be. What's the harm in applying for that? There's none whatsoever, and it's business friendly. So, that's all I've got to say at this point, any other discussion, so we can move along? All right, all those in favor?
Friendly amendment?
Oh, we got the, add the five million, up to. And I'll, what I'll do is I'll send this to, do you want me to send it to Jack or to Matt?
Sure.
Okay, okay. All right, with the amendment of five million dollars, up to five million dollars, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, three to one, thank you, thank you, Ms. Norton, appreciate it.
And, uh, if anybody's interested in Chip's conditions for forty and fifty optical?
You want more fun?
Yeah.
They're discussing it downstairs.
What time is the hearing for that one?
Right now.
It's, it's, the hearing's over, they'll just be discussing it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all.
Well, he may be glad that's over.
Are you coming back Monday, Chip?
What's that?
Are you coming back Monday night?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations on being off your crutches.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Number five, review discussed the approval applied for the One Stop for Growth Expression of Interest for the Site Readiness Brownsfield and Underutilized Properties Program based on guidance received by Mass Development on April twenty-second, and that's twenty twenty-four, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, entertain a motion to recommend. Okay, uh, Miss Dean?
Uh, because this is a future date, uh, that we'll be meeting with Mass Development, we don't have specifics. Um, however, they did say that it would be very helpful for them to come out, talk with us, go view some of our potential sites, uh, that we're proposing in these grants, for them to be able to give us feedback in advance of submitting our application that Friday. Um, and so we feel like this will help us to be more of a shoe-in for the expression of interest, to really get the buy-in in advance. Um, Mass Development's been very, uh, supportive of, of us over the last few years. They gave us, for instance, a Brownsfields grant for thirty mil before it started to, um, collapse, for us to do a Brownfields Phase Two site assessment to make sure there was not any contamination before we took it in tax title. Unfortunately, before we had the opportunity to get the, the property owners, um, permission to access the site, they went into bankruptcy, which halted everything. So we were unable to take advantage of the Brownfields grant, we had to actually turn back the funds. So, but they see the potential there, and they really wanna see us succeed in our efforts to potentially redevelop thirty mil if possible and use the, the Underutilized Properties Program. Um, the Underutilized Properties Program is incredibly competitive, we'd be lucky if we got one of these grants. Um, and so I will be proposing some potential, uh, buildings, um, around town that I think would be good fits. And then for the site readiness, so the site readiness would potentially be for thirty mil. The Brownfields would potentially be for, um, the Colignesi's property across from the DPW. Um, and then the Underutilized Properties would be for downtown properties.
All right, thank you, discussion.
This property across from DPW?
There are two large lots owned by the Colignesi's that would be great for potential luring of manufacturers, businesses, you know, warehouses. Um, but, uh, because it's in proximity to the DPW, D E P site, um, it probably needs further, um, Brownfields, um, site assessment.
That's it. All those in favor? Opposed or zero? Then number six, review discussed the approval to apply for One Stop for Growth Expression of Interest for a Mass Works grant for up to two million dollars to complete Phase Two of River Crane Street at Pleasant, at Two Pleasant Street, entertain a motion.
Some moved, I'll second.
Thank you, Miss Dean?
Uh, was asked if the, if the town had any other immediate potential projects? I think, um, a few of the counselors had asked, are there other competing Mass Works applications for which we should first consider ourselves before considering Chip? And while I was putting together the materials for the, um, the memos, I learned about the House, Housing Works grant and how it's a better fit for them if we, if the state agrees. And started thinking about, well, then if it frees up the Mass Works grant, although I don't think that the state will approve us at this time, there's no harm in us asking at this stage. Um, I don't think the state will approve us because we're still holding money for East Main Street, which is to go out to bid this spring, and we're still holding money for, um, River Crane Phase One to go out to bid this spring. So they may see us as just, you know, entering into contracts and not executing. Um, but I figured if we could at least try, it would be worth it. Um, and so what would happen through that expression of interest is, you know, they may say, yes, this is a good fit for Housing Works. No, this is not a good fit for Mass Works, or, 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 yes, this is, you know, either of these could be a Mass Works project. You choose, this, you know, maybe this is not good for a Housing Works project. So this is really the chance for us to get as much feedback as possible.
Uh, and forgive me, quick question on the, on number five and number six now. Is there any matching funds at all? Just, I, let's say we apply, would there be any matching funds that we'd have to kick up at all?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, oh, now, discussion on number six. All right, all those in favor? Opposed or zero? Motion adjourned?
Sold.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?